I'd like to welcome everybody out to the City Planning Commission meeting for July tenth, twenty twenty five. And we begin our meetings by having a pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Green here and a prayer given by Commissioner Prince.
I would like to read to you the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're going to be able to, in our community that we do, and be able to gather together and discuss things of our safety. Yes, I would please help us to be into the those who are here tonight and who live in our community and will be able to make decisions based on truth and be able to have the power to discern it. Yes, that I would please help us to be mindful of others and to be able to be able to be respectful. We're grateful for the freedoms and blessings that we enjoy in this country and ask that please help us to use those freedoms and blessings to bless the lives of others. We ask that I would please bless all of those who are serving in our military and let them know our gratitude for all that they do we're grateful for. This beautiful city that we live in, say these things, so Jesus Christ.
Thank you, Commissioner Green here and thank you, Chris Sharp Prince. First item of business will be the approval of last meeting minutes dated June twelfth, twenty twenty five. Do we have any corrections? No current corrections, I can all accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I wasn't here yet. I'll make a motion to approve the planning missions meeting minutes dated June twelfth, twenty five.
We have a motion for Commissioner Wilson, we have a second.
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Greener, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion minutes are approved. Now on to our action items. The first action item is a discussion and motion of drafting an amended ordinance for oversight structures and ADUs. Um, we discussed this in our work week earlier. And went over kind of what we feel would be necessary to um, give residents a little bit more flexibility on what they're able to do in these structures. Um, it was favorable in the other comments that anybody would like to see.
So it was a new requirement. The adjustments to the oversight structure and also the ADUs when we sent a recommendation on, do we want to do that as two separate recommendations? Or just the one?
I think we could send them this one, the council would be able to strike maybe that we put in there, so if we send them this one. If they like part of it, they can keep it, like all of it, they can keep it. I don't think you necessarily need to have two, so good.
I guess just for information, we're looking at increasing the size of oversight structures from two thousand on R one to five thousand. And on R two, we're running from twelve and
It comes by.
R seven five to three thousand and then R two to five hundred. And the ADUs would be half of we're looking at increasing to half the size of the structures in both the structure and just the, just a pre standing ADU as well, sort of same. The ADU would be twenty five hundred on R one, fifteen hundred on R three and twelve fifty on R two.
I think it would be actually not R five one, fifteen hundred, because our threes are thirty per month.
All of it's R seven times seven, yes.
And then we want to make sure that there's only one ADU per. Well, I don't know, we got to make sure what is per parcel, we have over the same, I don't know, right, the parcels, right, whatever legal comes up with the basis of it.
Most homeowners that have two parcels, they won't have a primary structure on it, and so they can't do an ADU without a primary, so we should be. Pretty good.
Mention something, only one detached, so we allow one detached and maybe if they have a basement ADU as well, or would that work?
Internal.
Do we want to address that?
There's a lot of people in Hopper that have internal ADUs that rent their basement. Um, there's no, we want to, we want to incentivize them, because then again, that helps with our modern income housing reporting. Um, we've talked about this before on how to incentivize those that already have them to come forward and speak up that they have, but.
What if we, because I'm not necessarily opposed to not
Sure.
outside. Is addressed, but that doesn't.
Let me see, no parking.
You already have no on street, like these floors for some of the year, but if you have people living in the basement, and you've got people living in the backyard, and you have it, it may have chaotic, we're not, therefore not. What do you guys?
I agree that parking would be one issue that would need to be on draft, I don't could city staff when they come through their permit book at that, or does that have to come for us, I guess?
I don't know. It's what they should, so city staff knows where the water.
It can make it a thing that they have to have two parking spaces per ADU.
Have they a woman to do it? I think that's fair.
An option, I don't know.
So maybe you can, I mean, everybody's okay with that. It's a recommendation, we're supposed to be careful, and then I mean, you guys think it's okay to have one internal, as well as one?
I think so.
I would interest, yes. You guys may not know that Bryce Wilcox started to increase the size.
Yeah, we talked about it, and maybe the council can just split it, I shut it down. But we were trying to know, by doing this, add by increasing the size of the oversight structures, so maybe that's going to speak about, or another maybe the policy talk for us, it was important, I guess, I didn't think it would open up opportunities for people wearing a different keeping home set. Right, nice, through the six, for these.
I grab, I give them bigger signs for the box, I think.
Can I just reiterate then, and then we'll get something drafted for the next one? Um. So increased oversight structures, R one, five thousand, R seven, five, three thousand, R two, twenty five hundred. Increase, or uh, let's see, one DADU, or maximum of one DADU and one IADU per yeah, detached and internal per whatever we're going to call it, we all miss that term, I don't know, owner or resident, whatever, parcel or lot. And then the ADU what, will write up so that the ADU can be fifty percent of the a maximum of fifty percent of the accessory structure. Or fifty percent of the allowed accessory, yeah, so fifty percent of the maximum allowed accessory structure per zone. And then to last one, sorry, two part, two dedicated parking spaces per ADU, at per either ADU, IADU or DADU as approved by staff. Or planning commission, I suppose, because the ADUs are going to come in for um, conditional use permits still. Um, at least that's what you guys wanted them, so they could just be two dedicated spaces, you know, verified and approved through a conditional use permit. And you guys could kind of see, okay, where are you dedicating your parking slots, in case I, I don't think you'd want to count ones right behind a garage, for instance, or write it out to the back on the side, or maybe they add two if they do it attached or something.
I think it would not make sense.
So that'll be part of their CUP then, for the, to get the parking at least looked at, so, okay.
And just to clarify, we're not changing the other things that are placed as far as owner of the property has to occupy either the ADU or the primary residence, and there was yeah, there was, well, we're not requiring that, just for the oversight. Yes, and then there was supposed to be some burdened in there, and I'm not sure if it's going to happen because frequently see like debo, in this application when people have come in, but they were going to update that so that people are aware of by for those, of those requirements that they have to, by one of those, and if they, if they move. Then they, they'll get to see them, but let me know and still report that with whoever works with that property, you know. And we will, when I was saying.
I swear it is.
Okay.
But I can double check. I feel like we haven't had an ADU in quite some time, so remembering.
Violent system.
So, it's me, it's me, I'll take all blame, but yeah, I'll double check. But I'm pretty sure.
Probably just get rid of that old copy, I think what's happened is, is we've updated on it.
There's so many.
There's so many iterations, we just use the old one and it comes through, so. But yeah, that's a good point. We want, we want to make sure we have it signed and filed, that they have agreed to it, so. We'll make sure we just get one standardized one.
I think twice you agree with. No complaint.
One, one thing to keep in mind as we speak about, I know I don't know how this applies to checking the box for like the modern income housing. Acquire about the parking spaces for these ADUs, that's what he just came out in May, at his press conference, with the bill here. Kind of his helping initiative, so I don't know how that will affect the city on checking that box if we're still requiring those to have several, I mean, I'm not saying of having that, but they might not check the box if we have that requirement, just so you might want to help to check.
Do you know that was just like an additional strategy, or is that required? Because I didn't check, you see that, this is what I had this.
Yeah, I did, yeah, I just know that one of the setups was true, 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 with that, so I don't know if it's like a additional, this is checking the box as well, is that, I guess, it's still.
Well, we can keep our strategies each year, we just have to show the progress, but I think, but we can add additional tracks. Things like that, we wanted to go one. The subtle events, it needs to be a bunch of events, but we only have three, but one of them is the ADUs, so that why we need to we usually know, it's not sort of progress, then maybe this is going to do that, because of the parking. And still think we have to be careful, so we have to make sure that there's at least added part there for what we're doing, so.
I was, I was just saying, that's something to be aware of. So we need a motion to approve your draft, okay, bold, so I will. Is there any other comments on those two things, or do you think we have it handled?
I just, I mean, I don't know how the city councils can receive this, that these structures are going up like a hundred and fifty percent size. Uh, I'm going, is, are we giving the way there's the city council going to be able to reduce that number, or is this like a desperate, or is that a thing?
I think people look at it and change it, it's not they don't suppose to be having to. They just sort of recommend it, yeah, so, yes.
I mean, that's a huge challenge, going from two thousand square foot structure to five thousand square foot with because one thing I do like about how you know that now with the notification going on, some neighbors are kind of know, or something's happening.
True, that's a good point.
To go from two thousand to five thousand, like, five hundred square foot, now that, now that's where we said, take something that big, that's after like five hundred thousand dollars, or something like that, but.
It's hard too, because I don't know if the paperwork can say any not, as long as it, nobody's saying, like, I mean, spare the meat, or something.
Oh, I'm just saying that doesn't give the neighbors a chance. They're like, people find out that they have time, they, they know if I have to help.
Yeah, they pay a dollar, yeah, they pay a dollar. So say if I pulled a conditional use permit, I would pay a dollar for that notice to be sent to my neighbors within six hundred feet around.
So other, um, I'm just saying, people are kind of living usually what it is, it's what I do, and we can't even think about them. But can we make up a reason why this would be something we wouldn't approve if it was that made it straight to me, like?
I don't think there's like a ordinance reason, like I think it's most people just like a preference reason they do. Which, which, what side are you in, the side where you own your property and you can know what you want on, or under neighbor and I have, right, it's two of them, like.
Definitely.
I just think the middle ground is I was like, my name is now, you know what I mean, so, but I'm allocated since I've been a sergeant, so like, it's, it's more than I was expecting. But I'm okay with it. Because if something came in, one to five thousand square foot, I'd do it, I'd, I'd go along with it.
I think that's what we talked about, because a lot of people are going to take over the property, which I don't want to care to be handled, but, I mean, if, when I think about the twenty five hundred square foot structure, just an oversight structure, something like that, that doesn't really make a deal. But for some reason, my brain was like, well, it's attached to the ADU, this twenty five hundred square feet, so that's like never happened back there.
We still have our, we still have our.
Yes, twenty five, from the.
Well, I mean, my house, not my garage, but my house, but it's twenty five hundred square. And it's not, it's all house. That is big, but, I mean, it is mine, because it is open possibility for people, you know, to have, right now, my person's per foot, that's like.
Well, such we bring, they're getting, like we talked about. Rent these people, they don't want to tell me, so it will help people, because they're not going to have to, like, pay for the law to do that side, so hopefully with all the people that have borders, build a house right now.
Well, the, the other feature on this is when we kind of are sending this up to the council, they're like, oh, why? You know, Malcolm showed us why we're even looking at this, right, when you look at the amount of conditional use permits that were requested, none of them are denied. Most of them already fell underneath these new requirements anyway, you know, so it's turning up applicant time, it's bringing up city time. You know, that's kind of taking some of those headways out quick.
And I think most of the people that have come in for to have a car one zone, but that could be, that could be paper or anywhere, and so most of the yeah, or, or like that, being quite a bit papered, I don't see three fifty five thousand square foot or twenty five hundred square foot, but any paper by or put over by the. Yeah.
Any other comments?
If we're worried about neighbors being notified, do we just say it's over twenty five hundred square feet, neighbors within six hundred feet need to be notified?
I don't know, I think the, if, if we're going to go initial use permit, that triggers the notification, right?
All, all that is, is what's going to be done, I don't know, at least that's the ADU, but, but I think it's not going to happen, because it's not an application for this, triggers the six hundred foot.
And I don't know if we need to require that if it's, if they don't need a conditional use permit, they're not coming to us anyway, because they want to have a related forum.
It's not required if they're under the square footage, like, we don't notify them if they're under that square footage, they just go straight to the building permit site, submit their plans and wait for approval, so.
I don't know, I do the council, they'll, oh. Anyway, the board was always working, gosh, and so, I, I sometimes send it up there, ask, don't do it, they're saying, oh. But if they say, okay, we're going with this, and they kill it back, I don't know.
All right, I'll take a motion on the drafting of a oversight structure increase along with ADU.
My motion is that we recommend a revision of minutes to show that we are increasing the allowable square footage on your oversight structure. In an R one zone, five thousand square feet, R seven, five, three thousand square feet. And in an R two zone, twenty five hundred square. Um, as far as ADUs that are contained within those uh, oversight structure. It will be increased to a maximum of fifty percent of what the excess structure square footage is. And as far as detached ADUs. We would be allowing in R one, a maximum of twenty five hundred square foot structure. In an R seven five, fifteen hundred square foot structure, and in R two, we're twelve hundred fifty square foot structure. And we'd also have the contingency that there would only be one ADU allowed per property. And that, um, we would need to have a recommendation put in place as far as what can we verify, and it's something to do with the ADU, I don't know.
Do you have a, I have the internal, I need to hear. Yes, there's several, one, one detached.
Oh, gotcha, only one internal and one detached ADU per property segment.
We have a motion from Commissioner Prince to revise the oversight structure based off of per comments as well as the ADU, um, as well, that was a long motion, but it's, it's down, hit it. Oh, do we have a second?
I'll say.
We have a second from Commissioner Greener. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion assets. All right, next item of business is to discussion motion on AD policy and procedure document that has been for the actual planning commission that has been, we've been working. This commission has been working on, previous commissions have been working on as well, so I'll now open up now open up that to discretion and to find your comments on that document.
Do you know, maybe go through those final portions, we can talk about them?
Yeah, I do, not yours.
Okay, so, um, I believe you know this document a few weeks ago, it's the same document, actually, we've not checked this, we're looking at, I mean, hold on. Your vision, since this is compiled, using uh, the policy in particular, and by a lot of other planning commissions from cities that I told this from, um, so on that first page, excuse me, I admitted only because in the first document I didn't provide it, it missed out, so that'd be really changed on that first page. On page two, um, under organization, the last sentence the added nominees for charity commission, rest of already served on commission for at least one year, really being nominated. Also, under, under the chair's duties. Coordinate with the support staff, providing this copy of each and every sub application. Informational documentation pertaining to the final commission, that review, at the same time, this information is provided to the TRC for its initial review. This information should be announced separately to each of the should take reviews of all, and we talked about it a little bit, we're needing this, this support, so it's our sub ordinance that we just um, and I know we've talked, where we need to have some sort of checklist in place, and that lost out, or you don't have it. So that we can look at that, when the applicants come in, the planning commission can also see the new stuff. Reviews the goal, whether or not we have the, the location, because the ordinance has established terms, the commission forgot, it's saying, no, we still need that according, game starts taking. Um, and then, down at the bottom, under item no more than, it said two before, we can change that more than three commission members should get around any such. That's because we need to need to change that to three, so it's room. Um, if there's any discussion on any of this, it's about me. Page three, under the word that, um, this would be under item B. After the consent, because order of this, if I agent, I should be satisfied by my chair and the rest of the panel. The sentence would be added, items may be added to each agenda by support staff or by two members of the commission.
Hey, I do our question, I apologize if I gave it this crazy, but is there a timeframe on later, on how much notice they need to give, or they add things to the agenda, so it's not like a last year, like, hey, tonight, discussing this?
I mean, I know, Carrie talks about us getting to jam out of the packet, at least four business days in advance if we can. I don't know any specific reasons, I don't care so far. If there is a timeframe on, and I just could be on, it's, you know, like, that's very smart, that's nice for scrambling, like, if you want to have something it needs to be in enough time, you guys to get it prepared, and we can go out, like, we're sharing them, but we're not for giving but we're saying we want our agenda, that we send out four business days before. What would be fair to you guys?
Yes, so with council, so I try to do the week prior, so the Thursday prior to today's meeting. Um, we do ask council if they have anything that they want to have put on the agenda, or with that, if they have like attachments with it, like that Monday or Tuesday.
So we said maybe six business days before.
Yeah.
Our meeting.
Yeah. That way it gives us me time, the maritime attorney time, to kind of review that before it gets published, I guess, so it just gives time to review.
So maybe the items added to the agenda by the commission must be on at least six business days prior to the meeting.
Well, that's business days, that means it has to be perfect for any opportunity, so.
We need on Thursday. So should we say by the Monday before, the Monday, the thing is, if we're really, if you have the goal of sending, sending the agenda out, it's the agenda.
So yeah, you can do the Monday prior to the meeting.
The Monday prior to. So items added to the agenda of, uh, by any mission must be received by closing day on Monday for Monday.
Right, and there, there is circumstances where there's emergencies, and like, we can always review those in that situation, but.
But it would be the Monday prior to the meeting, it would be the Monday.
Yeah.
Two Mondays prior.
Two Mondays prior, so.
Right?
I guess you could do ten, ten calendar days, make it simple.
Ten calendar days.
Yeah.
Right, that's, that is.
That way it's more, okay.
That's good, should we say must be added to calendar days, um, other than special exceptions approved by staff?
Yeah, I'd say that's fine.
But I can see that the support staff will prepare a staff memo to be distributed to the commission, whether it's without a time to prefer or leave by the commission. The staff memo will include listed conditions, and stated ready critical application, as well as the components of information pertaining to this. And whether they have an appetite, or are still lacking, according to city staff, junior public works, so. If such a staff memo is not included in the permission packet, the commission may well by majority table the applicable application. So in the past, we've always had a memo in there from the staff saying, we're concerned about these deals or cases have been taken care of. That's really helpful to the commission, because we can't really make decisions if we don't know what's going on, and sometimes we all find out from that, I, I think the subdivisions is going to be taken care of. That I per conditional use permit, that anything revolve, or involving, like, they filled out a complete application, and that those requirements, if we can find out about that.
Like that little section of like safety trap, like those things.
Those kinds of things are like, for instance, you know, when we have the daycare, not long before, there were some requirements that are like, we didn't know, or when we had the guy that wanted to put in the whole house. There were just certain things that maybe staff catch up, friends, they don't come to the meeting and be frustrated, because we ask the most questions when they begin to tell ahead of time.
For sure.
So, um, and then on item B, there will be seven voting numbers on that. You say five. Um, under item A, number one, I did not find this, but I don't know if it would be really clear, or six commission members shall be addressed to Commissioner or Mr. Curtis. And our last name, like, I don't know. And their last name, like, I don't know the point of that particular, that was just in one of the ordinance, just one. That came over, he had, I don't know, it doesn't matter to me, because it's a little bit of a vegetable, but. Say that was a requirement of the.
I think it's helpful dirt, sorry, I'm talking so much. I think it's helpful during like motions when you guys repeat who said what, just so that also they are.
Okay.
Aware of.
So instead of saying like, show them who does say.
I would say Commissioner Greer.
Um and then under attendance. Uh a member may be removed from office by a majority vote of the majority of the city council, led into the birthday of hand by B two. Um.
Do you want to make out a unanimous vote, or I guess?
I think this is actually where Hope says.
I'm very proud of it, it doesn't really, it just says. Doesn't specify. That's what I want. That's because I went to, well, what is this all in process?
I think the council would have to. That was wrong with me.
Okay.
Yeah, so um. I don't know, I don't know what, I even think. The way that it's set up right now, the ordinance. I'm pretty sure it's the one there that was going to be specifying a majority vote of the city council. There's only certain instances where I have to be unanimous, usually. I think that's even rare. Um. I think I just. The support staff will open my mission members and training opportunities. And keep track of mandatory requirements fulfillment for the firemen, so I know there's confusion. Then I just added it to the state law. Um number six, the orientation of new member training will be completed within six calendar days appointment and reported to the commission chair. And then at the bottom of P. If a commissioner has a potential conflict of interest, that person should not participate in discussion and voting on that matter. Nor attempt to use the authority of other commissioners, people are doing their actual meeting. That was in there already, but then we got it, so determination or conflict of interest, as they were seconded by the commission. Um and then the commissioner who has a conflict of interest only the ideas. But it used to say leave the room. I don't think we need to tell people like, leave the room, but we're voting on that, but it falls down. That they have a conflict with and they can take a seat down there, so they don't have to target the discussion vote. Um.
So just to clarify on that section of conflict of interest is. It's only the commission, the commissioner that feels that they do, so like I can't say, oh, I think Travis has.
I think if you read in that.
So the member of the fine commission feels he or she or or the other may have a conflict, okay, so, so. You could be called out by him, so there would be.
Yeah, we could see that you're going to conflict, no, you said, well, Jace said. Those are the ones who really do work at the store, it's one of those. As you know. Let's get it out there. Um same thing on number seven, where pages six, number five, just change from. Being removed from the commission chamber, just to go into the. Um number seven. Uh uh three, down at the bottom. When a member becomes incapacitated for office permanently or for what appears to be a protracted period. Or moves from the jurisdiction or recovers, but he has a recent non following. It failed to resign. The chair shall cause any necessary investigations to be made and sent back to the mayor. Who may defer to the city council, the office statement and appoint replacement, the advice and consent of the city council. Subject to the procedure granted by the, as long as they are able to stay in the city, just to make sure that we're actually following the rules, so. Um and then under terms of office, number one. Let's see, all terms for planning, sorry, members of the fine commission should be four years until their successors. And until their successors are appointed, followed by a complete mandatory training and rotation. Exceptions to a four year term, we apply our appointment to a shorter term as necessary to build a premature dedicated position. I mean, or a staggering of terms as necessary as or by the city council, like what we just went through. Um standing members may be appointed to additional terms when they have expressed this desire to do, to do so, and are recommended by the mayor and the city council that voted upon by the city council. And then. Number nine. We talked about this in the meeting before. Um in F, under any member of the commission or staff of the commission by the chair, they direct any questions or comments to those speaking at the podium. Back to page three. Um. And then number seven, three. Uh number four. Questioning any or referring, you know, members to the. When, when the chair runs the meeting anyway, they usually all end it up at zero, we're agreed about. For questions or that comes up and that's just. Something that. Under item T one, changing three to four, again, it's now that we have a commission. On page ten, order of business, the order of business that regularly being shuffled and announced agenda. The chair will consent to commission by a majority vote or counter recommendation of the support staff, a majority vote of the commission. They consider matters out of the end of, we have that a couple times, we've got like. And we had a drug alcohol treatment theme, we knew that was going to be like a three hour meeting where we've. Foned it on as we've other people that they have, so that they're not waiting for. Uh number eleven, regular meeting procedure, so this is order of business. And you get down to number two, pledge allegiance, that will be done with the chair at or prior to. And reverence will be done by invitation of the chair at prior to the meeting. I am not wrong, so I rather look forward, very uncomfortable with the idea of course, if somebody needs to say a prayer publicly. I believe that we have the right to worship, help me, are supposed to, that's constitutional rights, and people don't want to pray. And it's always been the songs like them, that that was done by invitation and acceptance of the person asked. So that would stop that company in where it's just being, somebody's name is put on there without checking the person. Um number twelve. Or page twelve, excuse me, under item E. Where it says, talking about a continuation, which is the same thing as a legal item. Continuation by with or without a date, we would take out. Without, because I think, like, we discussed in our work, we need to have people follow for any available, how long are they going to be here? Um. And then. As you go further down, it's talking about electronic meetings. No more than three members of the commission may attend by electronic or by electronic connection. A commission member desiring to attend by electronic connection, we changed it to show me our best intent. To not abandon share and support staff at least one assistee prior to the meeting. I think there's times where, like. Last month for me, I had a plan on attending electronically, but. Because of the situation that I had going on, my husband, that was not a possibility when it came out there, so. Sometimes there will be situations where we can't. Um and then there was a title of participating, maybe I was supposed to participate. In that same. And then agenda for the meetings, item A, number one. I mean, we say the odds to the agenda of the support staff by two members of the commission. The order of division's allocations of the curates, so that was changed to instead of the order of these funding agenda. Shall we ask this by the chair and the recipe planner? And then down the bottom, the number of lady brothers, we discussed this. We want to know, no agenda shall have within ten items and any inclination must approve by a majority vote of the commission. Is can't be, or what do you guys? You know, you said, we're going to be going on that.
What is the, what is the matter, are we seeing?
Count, count, I would say counsel does sometimes reach that ten. I say with you guys, as of right now, there's not a whole lot of construction happening, and so like the A D U's aren't coming through anymore. So I think, and even if this new ordinance passes, like you guys, I don't think we'll ever reach.
Yeah.
Hardly ever ten items unless there's.
That's.
Something happening.
Are you on there, or are you going to call them amended after, uh, yeah?
Okay. Um requests to be on the commission agenda shall be filed by the applicant, this is down under meeting number one. Twenty eight days prior to the decision by the planning commission. And then specified request to be on the planning commission agenda, go on and take family subdivision applications, we'll follow the process laid out by the ten should be. So we don't want to mess with that, I know we have. So we're going to do a rigid background sweep. They have to follow them. So this would just be personally, isn't two, or the one or two monthly sufficiency. Um and then for translation, uh. If no business is scheduled for the commission or there's a carry in the form, the commission will not be available, any beach, very diverse special number creation. Maybe not by the chair or support staff, like giving up still, mission never, so they are before noon, dates meeting or as stated. Mission will be able to attend. He's not going to be able to do that if he finds out at three o'clock.
Yeah.
Um and then under number seven. The chair of the planning commission shall have priority to the following, dash number three, certainly. Time limits, right, maybe the oral presentation, discretion, the revival information. If not already outlined in these processes and procedures, any but free and jury commissions. I know we have, like, when we have this thing on, we had. We live, or actually, it's a water well, we'll be limited, we were going to go to like. P thirty or something or so, so we did that by a little of the mission. Um and then, let's see. Under number five. Way that conservatives run the application of any rule herein, where the circumstances of the hearing indicate that it would be expedient and appropriate to do so. Providing us a favor to some. Regeness, where the nine, three, is of a substantial rise, provided herein, rise by law. Which is, if included by a majority of the commission. And then. We took out time limits, we talked about that back in December, that's on page fourteen. It was item B before, we just started out. And that's.
Was the time limit as like the, the meeting time?
I think so, I think we're going to stay in.
Sorry.
Chair named those, the total time limits fifteen necessary for the expeditions, the three.
So I think the citizens comment.
Oh, oh.
Still be.
I think we, there's somewhere that the goal was to enter meeting by nine o'clock or nine thirty, somewhere in here. That was what the views was uh. Changed.
It's in, great, I, again, seven was the goal of having by nine.
Yeah, so I think we did that because we were like, well, you want to be, so people can't get seen.
For sure.
Yeah, it's something an hour, and then the last person all of a sudden.
Yeah, that's it. So I think, I think.
Okay.
Like, there's a little bit of play in the times. In the work, Commissioner Larson was talking, the time, right, if we, if we have a meeting where we know there's going to be. Twenty people will want to get out, and time limits are necessary, but when we have our last meeting, yeah, they can leave. And one hundred percent are pretty school. And that definitely did work, but I, I think something, it's okay, it's not like I have a scratch in the period to. Allow them to hold that, if, if you legally, it's necessary.
Well, no, that con then is limited to three more nights, but we have half. Then we can vote, people need more time, we can vote, see, yeah. Jesus.
So on the citizen comment, as they go back and forth, like they have two minutes, and their comment, but if we have additional questions, that doesn't count as their three minutes. Forever, they can answer those.
Well.
And you're not supposed to kind of interrupt.
Well.
Well, let me, say we can address it, we can discuss it, we can get contact with you, whatever. I get there's situations where there is that communication back and forth, but.
Yeah, I think it depends on what the situation is like. You know, we have things where, like, one meeting we have, there were, there were a lot of missions, and some of them, the answer by the developers, have not answered by.
For sure, I think it's case by case, right?
By some, frankly, just, I guess, you'd ask question, like, that's a great question in terms of, yeah, or something. What's the answer to this, so, well, I'm trying to, like, Jason, I'm against her.
Yeah, well, I need to. It's something, like, let's see, maybe it's, I want to put it as a division, and then. I'm curious, if you get up and they ask questions, we do that, but just to be applicable, we address those issues, so.
I think if it's informative, I think it's very helpful, if it's just. Argumentative, I think it's very.
I don't know.
To last week with, with what is legal matter and what we can do as the body legally, like, some of those things, very, thank you for your comment, you'll have to address that outside of this. But this just takes some nuance to that.
Change, we, I mean, we're, uh, sometimes people, so, I mean, we're staff. And so we contact, and something there is a.
Well, yes.
So we just have those, they've done, and then, sorry, we're just, he's down for the city council, and I think it's important, if we have other conferences. It's not on the agenda. Agreeing, so, you know, sometimes we just. Not, we can't.
I guess going back to that, because I've never, I guess, realized what Jean was, Commissioner Larson was saying. Um just on like that citizen comment saying no action can or will be taken on any issue presented. Like, I wonder if I should put at this time. That way they're not thinking it's never going to be addressed ever, ever, ever.
Yeah.
At this, yeah, that's it.
Why are you saying that?
Just no action can or will not be taken. Honestly, it's. Yeah.
So then, why is the question that we would talk to them, if we say, somebody doesn't love action, can, will be taken, it's why. They can say what they need to say, why don't we need to have that? So it really going to happen, we.
Yeah.
They just bring to our attention, if she wasn't a thing, that it's not. But we can still give them direction, like a visual action with me in the polls, where we, we may unofficially, we may change something. Sometimes if people like, they just have a question, and they, like, what am I going to do if I'm making conditional, using their permit for this, really, they could have gone. But sometimes they're like to us, they just give us direction, that it's not considered an official action, it's a statement, it will go and change. And we're in search of things being like that.
And I understand, last meeting, yeah, to me, we lost, control was lost of the meeting. And people, people from Yasko made comments, and there's somebody else from Yasko that made a comment about that, completely, totally lost control.
It's gotta be the, and I'm not. Because, but the chair, like, the chair has maintained order of the meeting, so. You may just have to say, you know, I'm sorry, there's no back and forth, sometimes at the beginning of the meetings, you may want to say. Just want to explain how this process works, and there's not going to be back and forth, and you can only, and it says in here. They can only come into the mic group on one time on that particular subject that they're talking about. Because you'll see, especially in some of the more heated meetings, we want our people to come up. Times, and they're like, well, I'll take my three minutes now, and I mean.
Or I'll take my wife's three.
I'm going to give my three minutes now, okay? And so it's just a matter of explaining to them how this works up. Or see it.
Yeah, not, that's why it's important, we read during, before we start citizens, citizen comments, that that's red, no action now from A D. Do, and it's important, that, that's not stated before the citizens' comments, we're not. They, they love it, we can't take actions, we can't take actions. Yeah. That would leave a lot of. Yeah, sounds, I can give you a shout out.
Okay.
Any other comments on the policy or procedures that anybody wants to address?
I, I know something that has come up in, like, council meetings from their talking on citizen comment. Is, you know, if you look at the number five on here. And residents attending this meeting will pay a lot of three minutes, residents are about any issue that, and in capital letters, is not on the agenda. And I don't know. How I feel about that, because, look, I think it's somebody's right to be able to speak about whatever they want to speak about. Even if we cannot take action on it, I don't think we should be limiting anybody. I don't think we should be limiting anybody. To not comment on items that are on here.
I I agree with that, I think, I know the council put. Now they proved their public comment of on the agenda. I I think it's just my thoughts, but. If it's something on the agenda, it requires. And most people, you know, say what they might say. But as far as the comments, other comments. I'm fine with leaving that rather app, but take not only part that they can't comment agenda items, because I already can do, I don't think they should be spycening their free speech, they won't. They can say whatever they want, so that just like things that were not taking an official action on what they're saying, but. Why they should be kept from saying. What they want, because obviously it's respectful and they get their.
Well, I might conclude on there because. Folks have already been made on this several agenda item. And that turns to people who have been complaining about both that happened. And with us, a lot of times, our stuff is. So it's like, we hear their. View. And then we vote and then we're done, they wanna give her two cents about how they don't agree with what we did.
But I, but I think that's okay.
I'm I'm not saying this.
Maybe we got.
I mean, they they can tell me after the meeting too, that's how.
True, but sometimes.
It's because I know in this document it says something about.
But didn't they have a chance to get on the record like? Earlier.
I'm I'm, yeah, I'm just thinking more like. Think about the well, Smiths or something, if we had fifty people here without about three minutes.
And then they.
Didn't like it, and we had twenty people giving three minutes. You know what, this.
On her contrary, it says. And it has to be like redundancy, like if you're gonna have to give you need to add that.
Okay, thanks, as long as it, like, do you talk about general, as long as it's not something you're said.
But this is again, like, we have every training we've set based on that subject. Give them a voice, give them a chance to say. But we don't wanna be here for midnight.
Chair, it must be so. Yeah, we're we're in ground, we've already covered. You told us what you make, so.
But can they, when it's open, we open it up for discussion, can they come up then and say that, why don't they wait till?
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's mind, it might be both.
I guess, I guess, and I guess lately, what can you do? Well, we, you have freedom, you can say what you want, we're not, we're gonna do, because somebody can bring them, they start talking about some new agenda.
I think that the game that's unfortunately is gonna fall on. I think you saw.
Maybe even clarify prior to the public conference, that now is the time on that. This agenda item and it will be, I and I believe you say that, don't you, Jason, that the time of the comment is over? And I guess if somebody wants to come out. What do you, how do you enforce that?
Well, maybe you could just say at the end, when we get to that. Say, you know, that was the time that you could. Comments, yeah, but this is something that you've already spoken to, to, we asked that you don't allow this kind of brother. Or that maybe you kind of had a choice or you don't think they're there.
So tonight's agenda is a prime example, so if if. Any of our hundreds of wonderful audience members on the front of speed about this, they could talk about. What we're talking about right now.
Right, and I don't like that either. So, I mean, they're.
They did, what can you do?
City council meetings and the mayor will say, uh, we, that was mentioned, sorry, so. And for the most part, people. You know, they obliged to it, so.
It was what Travis was saying, because the things we found are in different time, we found. And so. Maybe you wanted these individuals. You know, when you guys talked about this, you didn't think of this. And they came up and they told us technically. She just wanted to be pretty old enough. And we could revote on, well, whoever. There's a stipulation, it's like whoever made the vote, I don't know if we have that in the councils, but. Whoever made the vote. Could, or excuse me, made the motion could be old enough and maybe we could amend the motion. And so I can see where it's, if there's something on there that we didn't have enough opportunity to have in public hearing. I mean, the people come and they maybe. And I think you see the benefits of having them. And if we say you can't comment on it, because it's on the agenda, you're taking that away from them. So. I still think it's a good reason to be. If it's already something you brought to us, we ask that you left. The other things that need to be discussed.
Maybe it's like your kids, you have to hear it too.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I think they deserve the wrath to say that. Like Jean said, we can't.
But we. That are on here tonight.
Yeah.
I mean, we have the public. I think. I think it's that one. To give them an opportunity to be, to have, I can just take out. The line six pages out. And then by which we're controlled.
Do you wanna do that, starting next meeting, or do you want that? I guess you can always put up part of the procedures too, but. I guess even going for, I mean, it's as easy as an agenda. Just take it off. Okay.
Okay. And then. So. To my knowledge, this document. I don't know that this needs to go to the city council, because this is this body's governing document. And it states in there, if there's anything in here that's contrary to what the city of city ordinances and state law extend, the council would need to approve it. But I don't believe there's anything contrary in her. If there were any issues that came out, you guys noticed that. Our city ordinances, but we should be able to just. Motion in a route, this nice, we can make it effective now. We just going forward, we just.
Well, I remember coming, I think of the couple times we reference like the city organs and stuff in life. Like in the training, if like the conflict of interest and things like where references are letting gifts and. Figures where references state come up. We just need to say something that at the beginning that says like. You're bound by all state law and that we don't need to address those. I'm just, the length of it is. I'm just looking for ways to.
Minimize.
Minimize it a little bit. Where are those things, we are, we're already in the role of control anyways to, uh, I guess, I think we need to color out.
Does anybody here have? Interest on the agenda tonight, I doubt that's what they. Ever like that, I don't think it's probably gonna happen, but I mean, it's okay.
Oh, I'm not, I'm just saying, no, I'm just saying. You know, like the conflict of interest and all that, we. That's like a state statute, that was kind of right, like, as we read that, it was. I'm just another gift and figures, one calls out that state statute as well, so I'm just saying if we're. We're already down by those anyways, do we need to specifically call them out in the document?
And during the meetings, so. So getting this question, I mean, I'm gonna say, okay. Those factors, we need to be careful.
I'm I'm slow to pull this up because of generation of respondents, I don't know that they start first page. But on page, our second page and first of page, I guess, second page. In the highlights, those nominees or a chair on the commission, which I've already served on the commission, or be one year prior to being nominated, is that? Did that do? That's on that?
I meant that, I true.
Okay, I missed it, um, I disagree with that. Anybody that lives in Hookah can be the mayor, run on, be on city council, run for city council, run for mayor. Put their application and be here. On this commission, I don't know why I'm gonna make that kind of requirement that they need to be here for one year. I don't agree with that at all, I I can leave a mayor with a zero experience if I'm nominated. That make you the best mayor. Doesn't what make you the best mayor? If I'm nominated, absolutely. You're questioning what? Oh, okay, I'm just correcting your approach. What, and what did I say wrong? You said nominated to be mayor, you did, I'd like this to be mayor. Can I not be nominated? I don't know. Nomination. Yes, okay, I didn't know you use the English for that, so I'll make sure. Part of the team, as far as speaking, would that be okay?
Yeah, great.
I hold your breath. You're quite telling me you're gonna do it, so I don't know, so I guess. We can be, so. I think you bring a valid point. June saying that it does restrict somebody's ability, it doesn't. Or saying they still have to be booked on by the commission, which is a vote. I look at the. Other applicant that we just got, his name passes me now, but he's very. He's served. He's worked with cities a lot, had a lot of experience, and so if you're limiting, just by saying that you have to be on there, you're limiting. The potential of somebody serving there is. Is there already enough, I guess. It kind of goes to the same thing of, I mean, we don't wanna tell them what they can and can't speak about, we don't wanna tell people what they can and can't do. Um, if the city council found them. Comp, serve on the. If they get somebody to know that, and then they give the votes in the council, then. I feel like they should be able to serve that capacity. So those, that's. My thoughts on that as well, but it's. Yeah, so that's.
Doesn't it say something on your appointment to the time of commission, you can't vote until you have your training done? Doesn't already say that, right?
So that, so that means you can't be the chair? Obviously, there is some experience or requirements that are needed. Already.
Well, they can vote the very first meeting as long as they've been sworn in. And then as long as they have their, what's the training, six months from when they were voted in.
Well, they have to.
City that leaves our training. That they do certificate for, or they come in the first meeting.
I mean, I can see what you're saying, because it should still have to be the ones that vote onto the skin service chair. I think, um, the reason for putting that. If you're gonna chair a meeting. And serving like passing given chair is gonna be more beneficial if you've had experience, if you know the way that the commission works. A part of that process, especially how, like how. Our solutions are, we don't have any information, I think they're gonna take part of that too, where you can be, I know we've been able to speak for. I think there is, there is responsibilities that fall on others' shoulders. Um, that it would just be more than they have experience, but I can also see what you're saying. This body would have to vote by majority to decide the decision acquisition if they didn't, like. They were called on right. Or ask all my. They could show up with their votes. I can see either, either way.
Well, if the city council. Removed all of us, then brought in the whole new with the plan commission, oh, we can be the chair.
I don't.
That's.
For sure.
I think, I like the idea that. And you can become mayor and then get fed a fire hose. You start your. You start your servers right off the bat, so why would be, uh, be here? On the commission where they could be a chair, I guess, I I would agree with. I don't know about everybody else.
I, I mean, I think, and I can always. But. Going. To the mediums and the things that involve when you are the chair and then being able to facilitate that information. I feel like there's kind of been a lag with that this year, and that's. Like some of the subdivisions, these have been. Applying or even not received any evaluation, so it's, it's honestly. It's just something that I feel like is a secret to make sure that someone is completely. If you were going to hire somebody to business, then. Usually, usually that person has experience, not played with business and. Knows how to sit at that role, that's not typically somebody could. And so if the commission feels like it would be better to leave that off. I'm okay with that too, and we can, we can express that with our vote when it comes to that type of. Teenager. Or like.
So I, I, I like. The follow process of buying for that in there. But I also agree. Commissioner Larson. That if we're in a situation where we don't feel like. The nominee is. Is the right person for the job, to me, that points to a failure. The city council and mayor by putting the wrong people in place. If that makes some sense. So, um. Yeah, I, I, I don't, oh, I like that in there. I, you know, I, I would hope. That. The city council and mayor do their due diligence, I know they, they changed their process for selecting candidates. For the commission now. Yeah, I. Agree with.
I need to, like, I understand. We will, we don't really know, right, because you have somebody that's coming in brand new, usually with somebody appointed by the. They come in the very first meeting, we have no experience with them, we don't know if they're gonna act, we don't know if they're gonna. If we are voting blindly, the commission would be voting blindly in that situation. For the most part. On who is going to be the chair, that person may be great, but you have no experience with them, having them in there for a year. Wouldn't give us a little bit more peace of mind about who we're voting toward holding this body of, and that's great, those are great.
You also could reach out to that, especially if they know it. Because they're. Sworn in, then you have at least a big plan or. To get to know that person to say, what I want to present as a chair and. Um, just to, just to cover that part of our guests, you don't think about how it involves in all the interactions of it. And we get to see that over the course of the year.
Some of them are my best friend. But that doesn't mean that I ever have to perform surgery on me, the following day, but I can only even hear a dream. But when it comes to being able to. Attend meetings, get the information, send me that information. And. Around the body. That feels sick and not having, even if I have a conversation with you. That doesn't mean that I wouldn't be able to make that call of any kind of. Any kind of education. That you could be a great person, but that doesn't. That's me, you're gonna go on a roll.
So I, I, I appreciate that, like, I absolutely do, but again, I, I lay that because of council. That they need to make sure that they're vetting candidates. That we three weren't, that will. That, that anybody. And if they're not, they can, I'm not sure if the states have been here, but. If, if the chair or vice chair are not doing a great job, can they be removed from that position? Yeah, I guess they, they can. City council and so. That's a, that's a tough one, that's a tough one in there.
Yeah, we, we should, as voters, we should vet those who are running for city council and mayor the same way we were vetted. And. I can run for mayor, I can run for city council, I have zero experience of mayors, zero experience of. I can run for mayor, I can run for city council, I have zero experience of mayors, zero experience of city council member, and, and be. Elected. Is this, is the chair more important than that, or what is it that we're afraid of, those, those of us that have been. Appointed here, in my opinion. I agree with Commissioner Base, I mean, anybody could. If it could be the chair or the vice chair, if it's the chair, there can only be you, why not the vice chair? I don't see, uh, I don't see why we put some kind of stipulation as far as. Education or, um. Experience when those. Offices that we elect have, don't have any of those same criteria yet.
I think, I think the same comments are being made. Back and forth, so I guess, do you guys? Do you want to put this to a vote to decide if we should include it or not, or guess what, what process do you guys want to follow to, I guess? Resolve this thing like the one, the one, Amanda's are such a period of combustion, we just started. Okay. Then the only other thing I wouldn't, it's like, I'm a believer in term limits. Um, I noticed, so I'm not opposed to putting a limitation on. The chair being a new person every year, and if there's no. Zoll takers, then they can re-up that, like, I think that gives. I think good smooth and probably good variety, and so, but I agree with term limits as well, it's like. Yeah, you can have somebody really great, and you can have someone really bad, and. It's nice if I was to, to kinda.
If we're sticking with the same. That we're sharing our society. Then we wouldn't put any stipulations, we wouldn't allow this body to vote on who we need to be, so just does a great job this year, we vote that. Mary Simpson served as chair for five years, well, I don't think she was the chair for five years, but she served as chair for a long time, those of us that served with her. Yeah. We were comfortable when first, did a great job. I think if we're comfortable with a person serving, that they should be allowed to continue serving, um, that would be my thoughts, if we're not gonna. For that kind of, strip the vote on one side, I don't think we should restrict it on the other side.
So, good, I don't care, huh? Alright, so we'll strike the. Nominee of chair. Of the commission must already serve on the commission for at least one year prior to being nominated. Um, any other? I guess items in there that we wanna add or. Remove, I don't, I didn't see. I'm good with the rest of this.
I think it's gonna, I think Commissioner Prince should be commended for putting this together. That's a lot of work.
Thank you. All right, no other comments, I'll open for a motion to adopt the policy and procedures as presented of the additions and subtractions that we have discussed. I'll make a motion that we adopt the policies and procedures with the amendments that, uh, we discussed, agreed on. As presented by Commissioner Prince.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Greer and a second from Commissioner Prince, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion. At this time, we'll open up the meeting to citizen comment. The, if you please, keep your comments to the live three minutes, and that you. Just say that you know we cannot take any action on what is at the speed of attack, take action, what is presented at this time. Um. The time, well, that time for any citizen comment.
Don't rush.
No, Morgan just asked me to come tonight, and you know how great she is, but a lot of people showed up, and. You guys all know, or so, I don't think that's concerning.
Absolutely, okay, please come, I'm so.
Sorry.
I'm Sean Brady, and my, I, I just have a question, I guess. Who do you address to, I guess I can just go to the, uh. The office. When they're there, but. Can somebody? They have a house, and then. They let all their kids move in the house, and they live in their trailer, the time on the side, on the side of the road, in the road. And they live there for like, what, maybe six weeks, and then they move, then they come back, and then move, yeah, so. Is that legal, because you know, you guys are talking about APs and all that good stuff? Can I, can I, can I, can I, around there, RVs parked in my street? For like two or three weeks, four weeks, five weeks at a time? Is that, like, can we do that, like, I don't know, no, I'm just asking. Is that a place to be addicted to that?
Yeah, I just hope like a code enforcement thing, I'm not others, I'm sure of that. I would, I would just take it to the city to make.
Okay.
No other comments, we'll close citizen comment, I will entertain a motion for the group meeting.
Hey, real, real, hey, real quick question, sorry.
Oh.
Quick one. I got a little, uh, turned around on the motion, so you guys want us to draft an ordinance for oversize, and do you bring it to you for recommendation? Or just take all that that you gave us and take it straight to city council with it?
Try you the city council, I don't know.
Okay, well, we'll get the, we'll get the parking in a reasonable situation, take it up.
Um, I'm.
Well, I think it's also moved down from being a significant changes or bringing to on it. You guys have still sent it out to the commission.
Sure.
So, like I said, individually, it's cut, even before, and then we know something that was best that we talked about. We can let you know, so they're square than before we said it, yes, and I think that's kind of the same thing with these policies and procedures. I'm here with you, the document, but. Two things that are implied, so we're sharing this.
So, but. Now we can.
Commissioner. Greer made a motion to adjourn, so I have a second. And a second from Commissioner Woodson.